I mean, you gave him the outwork. He could do it.
I just don't think they knew what they were getting into.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good.
Good. Thanks for being here. Mostly smiling faces, too, all wearing black, blending in out there in those gray chairs. Ryan asked me to go slow since Tracy's not here tonight. Do you want to pull off a roll call?
Sure.
For us? Okay.
Smith.
Here.
Leibel.
Here.
Sittig.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda, and it's pretty straightforward, just what's written on there. Got a motion to approve, please.
It's a motion there. Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to item four, which is our general fund. And Ryan, I'm going mostly just turn this over to you, and we'll wallop you all with questions as they come up.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor. While we will walk through the entire operational budget this evening, I'd like to kick things off, thanks, by speaking, by talking about the revenues. But before I do that, you folks know, I think, almost everybody in the crowd, we do have one new face here tonight. Alexis Miller is in the back, sitting next to Grant in black. She's our new HR director, started in early December, so she's survived just over a month with us. And she had to spend some time with Deb before she retired, and now is in that office and running full steam. So we're happy to have her here tonight, and this will be her, obviously, her first budget process, so I'm sure she's excited, just as excited as you folks are. So we will, we'll walk through the general fund first. I'm going to start with revenues, and then we'll talk about each category within the general fund, and then after, I give a brief overview of each category. So, for example, public safety, that includes fire, police, building, et cetera. Then you'll have an opportunity to ask those particular department heads questions if you're wanting more information about what, what we're proposing in their FY '26 budget. So let's start with revenues tonight. And as I alluded in my memo, I really, going into this session, or going into this season, had a lot of heartburn, wasn't sure what the revenue situation would look like, especially given some of the, the property tax law changes that occurred last year, our last legislative But overall, things look fairly promising for, for this fiscal year. So we saw taxable value grow, and I'll have you look at, it's page 17 in your electronic packet, it's entitled "General Fund Revenues." But our, our total taxable valuation grew by 6.6%. That's relatively close to where we were last year at 6.74%. Because of, of how the, the tax rate though ratchets down on cities that have growth, our actual property tax dollars grew by 3.5%, so there was a gap there. Overall, though, positive news, our general fund revenues, including fees and, like permit fees, charges for service, grants, et cetera, grew by just over $1 million, 1.17 million, or 6.3%. So that was, that was promising. Probably the biggest piece of that growth came from a line item called monies and credits. This is a tax that the credit union pays on, they don't, they don't, as I understand it, they don't pay income tax, but there's a special fee or a special tax outlined in the code, in Iowa, in the Iowa code, and I provided that section to you in your memo. But we are anticipating a jump in the budget, about $250,000 this year, this coming year. We actually budgeted $400,000 in the current fiscal year, and have already received nearly $650,000. So it's, it's a pleasant surprise, and when the credit union first moved here to their headquarters, I think I mentioned this in the memo, it was about $200,000 a year. So that annual contribution, or annual tax continues to, to go up, and it's based on the, as it read in there, based on the reserves, or there's some sort of cash that they keep on hand that is above what's required. I don't know all the details to that, but I know that the credit union has worked hard over the last couple of years, you've probably seen their ads as well, to increase their deposits. And so I think that has played a big impact here. A couple other notes on the general fund revenues. If you would scroll down towards the bottom of the page, you'll see two state shared revenues, the commercial property, commercial property tax backfill, and the business property tax credit. This will be the last year that we receive the backfill, and it has, it has shrunk every year for the last four, five years. So this is a, this was a credit that the states promised cities years ago would, would be held in perpetuity. We kind of knew that wouldn't be the case, and sure enough, they've come along and ended that credit, although we have one more year left of that. And then the business property tax credits can, they remain, but they're capped, they're maxed out, and so this will probably be the max number we see moving forward, around that $110,000 mark in the coming years. Now, they could come in and change this as well, and take it away from cities also. Hopefully, they won't, but right now, at least for this fiscal year, we're counting on it. So overall, positive, a positive outlook on, on revenues for the coming year. I'll note that the, what I'll call is the operating tax rate, so anything outside of the debt service tax rate would remain the same this year. You can see that about halfway down through the page, that $10.39 per thousand, that's where we were at last year, that's where we would be this year. Just to, to give you one more tidbit on that, and this goes back to how the state legislation operates, we used to call this our 8-10 levy, and up until last year, we, but we were able to, to budget $8.10 per thousand of, of value, that's, that was the tax rate that would help, help determine generating revenue. Last year, excuse me, that dropped because of our growth, dropped to $7.86. This year, it's dropped to $7.63. And then, as you look, as we try to project the next couple of years, again, that's right in the middle of the page there, you'll see it goes down to 7.48 and 7.42. Interestingly, in FY '29, then, the law, as it reads now, reverts back so that cities who are under that 8-10 amount can go back up to 8-10. It's, if, it's confusing, and I don't mean to bore you with it, but it is important, and I'm happy to spend more time outside of this meeting going over some of the intricacies of it. But it will, for the next couple of years, have a negative impact on our general fund. And if you would just real quickly skip to page nineteen, or eighteen, you can see what, what this has already, the harm it's already caused. In FY '25, the general fund brought in two, could have brought in an extra $275,000. This year, it's closer to about $575,000, meaning we could have had that 8-10 levy been in place. Instead, we're at, what, 7.63? We're, we're capturing $570,000 less. Next year, that's estimated at 7.88, and a running total for the four years is about $2.5 million impact to the general fund. So it's real money, and will have some real consequences, I believe, down the road. Fortunately, we've had some other things that have benefited us, like the monies and credits line item, our permit fees. We continue to see some good revenue there because people are continuing to build in North Liberty. So those are a couple of examples of where we're seeing additional revenue. So, last comment I'll make on revenues before we jump into the budgets, and this is really more on the fund balance, page 19. You'll see that this, with this proposed budget, we have, we would have a fund balance of just over two point, or excuse me, $6.7 million, which is 30, oh, 34% of our general fund. We want to be, in fact, we have a policy that says we'll be at 30%, anything above 30%, we would repurpose those, the surplus fund for other projects or programs, that's a discussion for another night, we will have that. But we are sitting pretty good, pretty solid. And why that's important is because when we go to borrow money, creditors will look at this. This is a big piece of our credit rating, and having the cash on hand and ample reserves is a very positive thing in terms of a credit rating. Any questions on the revenue pieces here?
Just a quick one on the growth rate?
Yeah.
Is that, you, how did you come up with that projection?
For future years, you're talking about?
Right.
Are you on page 17?
Yeah, I was 17.
So, anything in the future, we try to be conservative on. So we, you can see in '24, we had a 3.5% increase. The last two years, it went up more than that, six, almost 7%. So we just try to be conservative in our revenue projections in the years to come. So there's no magic to that 5 and 3% numbers.
And I'll say a caveat also to future projections on here, is that they're just guesses in a lot of ways. We don't know what those actual numbers will be, and the idea is just to know that they're there, and to, as you were kind of pointing out, the, the growth rate, you know, if, if our growth continues to be at 6%, then these revenue dollars, this revenue fund looks better than what's being projected. So estimated future revenues, expenditures, anything that we look at in the, in the budget tonight are just going to be really good guesses. They're not solidly locked in.
And Mayor, I would say, most of us have had, especially this year, conversations with lawmakers statewide, and we need to continue that. The conversation of a 2% flat is, is what they're talking about, and we need to talk louder, because a 2% flat, in my opinion, would be devastating to our town. So we need to keep those relationships and keep those conversations going, as we have been.
Yeah, and we could spend a whole session on that, probably, but it wouldn't be devastating for just our town, but all the cities in Iowa, and it's, it's just unreasonable, and hopefully, a more sensible plan will, will be considered. Thanks, Brent. And it's an opportunity, really, for the, the fire associations, the police associations, the park and rec associations, the library associations to all come together, because it's going to impact every one of those associations. Okay, well, let's move on to public safety. And like I said, I'll go down, and this is going to be on page 11, and I'll go down each department here, and then at the end, we'll have an opportunity for further discussion with the department. So with police, the biggest change in, in this budget is the purchase of a couple patrol vehicles. You'll see last year, we didn't purchase any, you can see that from the transfer line, and so the chief is trying to use the vehicles a little longer than what we previously have used, and she can elaborate on that if you're interested. And so that's allowed us to, to push some of those capital purchases out. We do monitor, then, maintenance expenses relatively closely, so that, you know, we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul in those situations. I think so, what you'll hear from her so far, that's worked out, but again, I'll defer that to her. Otherwise, from a staffing perspective, as you know, we are not quite up to full staff, but we've budget, included a budget here for having, having a full staff. We've also included a little bit more overtime this year, and some training expenses, as we will most likely be sending some more young men or women to the academy. In the emergency management budget, we're setting aside funds to relocate a siren, we may need to locate the siren that's on Penn Street, close to the, the North Liberty welcome sign out there in the pond. Help me, what's that street right behind it? Michael? What is it?
In Court, in Street.
Okay, great. So there may be a fee to, for relocating that. Fire, we continue to be aggressive from a staffing standpoint in this department. We'd like to add one full-time firefighter, bringing our, our bullpen up to four full-time, well, three full-time lieutenants, and then a full-time firefighter that would continue to help move along the staffing plan, and then adding $26,000 in the part-time budget for some backfill. And I tried to elaborate that, elaborate on that in my memo with the help of Chief Blots, so, again, he's here tonight if you want to talk more about those expenses. And we continue to rely on the SAFER grant for the funding of those three lieutenants, and I think we have another year left of that, if I'm not mistaken. Building inspections, Tom, is, is keeping things pretty, pretty straightforward there, nothing, nothing new significant, significantly new there. Animal control, similar to last year, as you know, we have now a position that's part animal control, part CSO within the, the police department, a non-certified position. That position's been working out really well, and it not only has been responding to animal calls, but also various calls that the police department may get that doesn't need an officer's attention. And I'll let Diane visit about that if you, if you have questions. And then lastly, traffic safety is our crossing guards, and that remains pretty much status quo. So with that, we can start with PD, and work down from there if there are questions.
Chief, I'll just ask the question, I know the answer to this already, but if you could help remind us, new counselors and for the public, replacing two cars this year wasn't the goal, to do two at a time. You've been trying to do these each year as needed. How many miles do you generally see out of a, out of a police vehicle?
So we are now pushing the vehicles up to about 120,000 miles. So in the past, what we would do is every three years, we would just replace. But we're seeing as the cost of the vehicles increase, and then the equipment inside the vehicles is as much as the vehicle itself, that can we push a little bit further? So other departments, you know, have pushed it further, we're just trying 120 and see if that's going to reduce or create any additional costs. We've only had one vehicle that I think is at 113, and we haven't had any additional maintenance, so we're, we're trying. We're seeing on the backend, we don't get as much for the vehicle on trade-in, but again, I still think it's better on the front end that we're keeping that vehicle and keep, it's just a really pain to get brand-new vehicles and try to out them.
Yeah, and Ramon, so how many vehicles do you have in the fleet to replace every 120,000 miles?
So we have nine marked patrol cars that we're using for the patrol operations, and so those are the ones that, I mean, they're, they're hard miles, they're
Yeah.
Sitting in the lot, they're, they're running, you know, when it's just cold out, so it's, they need to be well-operating machines.
Yep.
And they're maintained well.
Thank you.
I'm curious if we know, I mean, how far we are from that point where we stop? I mean, we're at 120, right? You said, can we push it to 140 or 150 or something like that?
We're going to keep evaluating that, and yes, if we can push it, we can push it. Three years out of a car seems kind of short to me. If we can get, you know, four, five years out of a vehicle, I think it's, I think it's doable. We're going to try.
And do you know, like, we're, we're talking hours, but you're talking also about, I mean, those cars are sitting in a parking lot, running a lot of the time, so you've got a lot of hours on those engines that, that aren't reflected in that odometer?
It is the engine hours that are detrimental to the vehicles. Yes.
So are we tracking those hours as well?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
We use cellular service to do, to do that, or is that a Verizon product when we're tracking?
Yes, it was Network Fleet. We have a different product that actually tracks where the vehicles go, idle time, there's alerts that go off if it's sitting, you know, too long, that it's, and they're just running, supervisor's good alert, so we can tell them, hey, shut the car off if you're going to be somewhere for an extended period of time. In this weather, we, we would anticipate them having the cars run while they're out of the car.
So Chief, and maybe this more so for both you and Ryan, so knowing that we're not full-staffed, typically filling those spots costs time and a half with overtime, so as far as impact to general fund, are we seeing above-average FTE costs, above-average staffing costs, I guess is the question, versus having those slots filled where we're just paying regular time?
Well, it's, it's, it's kind of, not, not as much as you might expect, because we're also not paying for the, for the full-time person that we're missing. So from an overall budget standpoint, it has, I can't answer it specifically, other than it hasn't been overly impactful as of yet.
What kind of things do you have in the, your community service officer do that saves the other patrol officers?
So he pretty much is a jack-of-all-trades, and he's also a volunteer fireman, so what's been beneficial, if there's a medical, he was out in his, he was actually in the animal control truck, there was a person called in that they were down, and he just happened to be right there, and he responded, and it wasn't anything that required fire or PD to respond, so he took care of it. He's also handling any vehicle unlocks, he had a house unlock yesterday, he does all the follow-up for all the animal control responses, which is a lot when they're following up on dog bites and issues that happen out at the dog park. He also, I think I mentioned, handles the vehicle unlocks, and he's looking to see, you know, at some point, we're talking about, do we put a push bumper on his truck, it's a large truck, just to help, you know, clear some intersections or clear some roads. So there's a lot that he can do. Anytime he hears that it's a customer service or a community-oriented response, he's the first one to volunteer to take it. So it, it's all, all types of stuff. He's also going to look at being a certified child safety seat inspector, so then he'll be able to handle that for our department as well.
Cool. So it's good, good position.
It's very good that we don't have to meet the mandatory certified training requirements, and he's able to jump in, and he's just so adaptable, and he touches so many departments within the city. So, I mean, he's working with fire department, he's working with street department, he's working with the parks department, he just, he's just so involved with everybody. It's a, it's a great, helpful community service option that we can provide.
Great to hear. Question?
Just a quick question on personnel services, and first and foremost, thank you all for being here. Thank you all for the efforts to put forth this, I know the, the lift that goes into that, so I really appreciate that, and Ryan, you as well. Just looking at personnel services here, in my simple math, is that about a 6% increase from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 for all staff salaries and benefits? Is that, is that fair, 3.4 to 3.6?
Well, the, the personnel services includes more than just wages and benefits.
Okay.
So it includes training, it includes work comp insurance.
Okay.
Any sort of reimbursement, education reimbursement, so...
There's a, there's a bigger pool than just that.
There is, and so from a, from a wage standpoint, the cost of living factored in here is 3%.
Okay.
And then
Thank you.
There's a step, there's a compensation step program, depending on how long the employees have been there. So it'd be 2.45% step, if they're not already maxed out.
At the 3.
The 3%.
Okay.
And then, sorry, the insurance rates, I think our health insurance has gone up about 10% this year.
Yeah.
Which is a little higher than it has the last couple of years.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
How about the fire chief? Anything for the fire chief here?
How, how, how is recruitment going to go for a full-time firefighter?
That's a great question. We've actually spent some time on that. When we talked a little bit internally about the idea of one firefighter, because as the city, or city administrator and I were talking, typically, it takes three people to equal one in the fire service, right, on shift? And Ryan reminded me that three people still cost three people. So what do you do with that one person? We talked about the notion of trying to fill gaps, look at the month ahead, Kelly days, vacations, sick leave, things like that. And we thought that would be a significant lift as far as trying to recruit somebody that was interested in a schedule like that. Most people that are trying to get in the career fire service are looking for that 24-48, that 24-hour shift schedule. So I think the way we're building it and putting them on shift is certainly a step, as far as recruitment goes, in the right direction. We're trying to be competitive with Cedar Rapids and Iowa City as far as the wage. So, yeah, I, I think we're not, we're not Cedar Rapids, we're not Marion, we're not Iowa City, but if they know who we are, and they know what they're getting out of it, I think they'll give us a look. We have a number of internal candidates that would potentially apply for the position, and I think they know exactly who we are, so...
Thank you. Peace of mind here for me?
Yeah.
All right.
Ryan, in your projections, are you, what's the SAFER falloff? So when we come off of SAFER, it's significant, right? That's three FTEs. Have we been, have we been budgeting for that? Or is, is that built in to FY '27?
Yeah, we, we haven't, we've looked at that in previous years, we haven't really focused on '27 through '30, we're working on that, that piece of the model now. But yeah, it's, we're, we're well aware that we'll have those three coming off, we've of course got some additional SAFER money coming in for, for, it's paid-per-call.
Stipends, yep.
So
Exactly.
That'll help some, but yeah, we have been keeping a close eye on it.
Chief, with the addition, how many more times are you going to realize three in a fire truck to get out the door faster?
I, I think with the additional full-time person, what that does is allows us to take the part-time and the paid-per-call positions that they will be filling and move them around. We typically play a shell game every month as far as staffing gaps. We're moving part-time, we're moving paid-per-call, so that we can realize that crew of three. And as I indicated in some of the communication, we, there's 11 times-ish per month that we don't have those three. So I think just in my estimates, adding one full-timer to a 24-48 schedule will allow us some, about 22 12-hour shifts in flexibility. Now, there's no guarantees there, right? We're, we're largely at the mercy of part-time, paid-per-call, the numbers, as far as how many we have, and their flexibility. Some months are better than others as far as their ability to give us more hours. We have a number of people that are dangerously close to the amount of hours they can be there every month. We have a number of folks on the career side, in their, for their real job, they work with us on part-time or paid-per-call, they don't want to spend more than one more night at the fire station if they can help it. So there's just a lot of moving parts with this, but eating the elephant one bite at a time, we think that one person could really, really have some impact.
Are you looking for one person or one FTE?
One FTE, one full-time employee. So we would put one person on a 24-hour shift, so they would be assigned to a shift, they would come into work every three days.
Okay. So, but it wouldn't be better to get like two half-times?
No, we've, we play with part-time so much right now, we typically try to keep our part-time numbers up around 20 people, right now we're at 15. We've had a number of folks that have recently gotten jobs on the career side, and they've kind of ratcheted back their availability to us. So we've got two more coming in next month, we're moving two from paid-per-call over to part-time next month, so we're hoping that has an impact, and then we're also bringing another five paid-per-call into the department next month. So we're kind of on that front end of more folks coming to us, but their availability remains to be seen. Kind of have to use what we get. I don't know if I answered your question, Brian.
No, I just, it was like, sometimes it's better to have two people, but, and then what's a Kelly day?
The best day of the month.
Funny, you should ask that question. So I'll try to make this brief. Fair Labor Standards Act, right? So in a 28-day work cycle, firefighters can work, I think it's 53 hours before we have to pay them overtime. I'm sorry, 212 hours before we have to pay them overtime. So when you start looking at 28-day work cycles across the year, out of every three 28-day work cycles, one of those work cycles on a 24-48 schedule, they'll work 240 hours. So we give them a Kelly day, which is a day off, and don't pay them, just to make sure their hours are lower, and I think we maintain 216 hours. And I think we maintain 216 hours if they don't take any time off, any of their accruals. And we'll end up paying them, I think, four hours of overtime per 28-day cycle. So it's, yeah, it's more than I ever wanted to know about that end of HR, but, yeah, got pretty deep into it a couple of years ago when we hired our full-timers, so.
Cool.
But, yeah, I'm assuming the person was named Kelly that thought that up, so.
Or that sued.
Yeah.
You talked a little bit about how you're moving people around. How is retention and recruitment of pay-per-call and part-time people going?
Pretty good. Like I said, you know, it's a double-edged sword when you have career firefighters that work at other fire departments on your department. I mean, they come to you, they're very well-trained, they're passionate about the job, but they're also, their flexibility or their availability is a little bit on the lighter side. That said, you know, I think we create a pretty significant, or pretty good environment, a good, healthy environment and people want to be there. So right now, what we're seeing as far as when people leave, it's either because they took a job somewhere else and they moved, or they got married, or they had children and time just didn't allow them to commit any more hours. So I think we're doing better. You know, at one time, we had a goal that we tried to keep people at least three years because at one time, not that long ago, we would look back and 66% of our firefighters had less than 18 months in the fire service, which is pretty low. But we're definitely beyond the three-year mark now. I couldn't tell you where we're at exactly because back then it was all about the pay-per-call side. Now we've, our audience is much more diverse than that. But we're doing, we're doing pretty good. I think the folks that are with us know who we are and they like to do what we're doing and so they want to be a part of it. But we can't control life and, you know, jobs, families, things like that do take priority.
And I know this is not coming soon, but, I mean, we have land for a new fire station. Where do we need to be staffing-wise for that to be a thing?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think what I would like to see, or what my advice would be, is that we need to first make sure that we can staff this station with three people 24/7. And then that next station, that would be the goal for that next station as well. Because as soon as you don't have the staffing out there, now you're looking at opportunities to brown that station out and it'll run with no people or very limited crews in which then they're waiting for staffing to show up before they can respond. Now, you know, are there ways that, you know, we could staff it with two or something like that? It just depends on, you know, the risk the city is willing to take and, you know, those kind of liability conversations. But, so, yeah, I think, you know, in light of where we're at with staffing, this ask for a full-timer right now is more aggressive than what our current staffing plan suggested. We were looking at another part-time expansion, but as we look at our part-time numbers and the flexibility that they're providing us currently, that's really just not in the cards. So certainly the next step is full-time, unfortunately. But there's benefits to full-time too, right? I mean, consistency, well-trained, they're there every third day, we know them, we know that they're not, we're not going to walk in the building and they're going to potentially tell us they're leaving for another job, or that could happen, but very, probably more infrequent than what we're getting right now.
Anything else? Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, those are kind of the two biggies with public safety. Anything else that you'd like to talk about here in the public safety budget?
I was just curious, the relocation of the siren, what was the need for that and where's it going?
Michael, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Current locations, Penn Court, Madison area, that site's under development or looking at development right now, so that's the reason for the possible relocate. It would be in the general vicinity because of the radius that that siren has to serve, but that's where we're at right now with it.
Sorry to make you walk all the way up.
What's that?
Sorry to make you walk all the way up here.
Nope.
Do we have space identified or do we have places where it could go?
We've got places where it could go. Obviously, we'd be looking at what the city currently owns or has a right to use in the areas, and that would be the cheapest and most likely approach to it.
Okay.
We use the radius modeling with EMA for placement of those, correct?
That's correct, yep. Luckily, in this location, it's a smaller siren, it's got larger sirens close by that are helping it, but we wouldn't want to eliminate it from that general area, so.
So just too close to the people who want to live there?
Yeah, exactly.
They actually would be fine. Growing up, I lived, I have a block from two independent.
Two overlap.
I was fine, so.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on this page? I'll note that this is Tom Palmer's last budget session. Well, at least, it's his tentative plan now. So if you have a final question for Tom, that would be the time. If not, though, we can move on. I'm sure Tom would appreciate that. Let's jump to Public Works. This is somewhat of a quick one, I believe. Solid Waste, as I think you all know, this is just an in-and-out. This is our payments to our third-party provider, LRS, for garbage and recycling, whatever we have in this line item, we also show a corresponding revenue. Transit budget is, we're proposing to jump up by $25,000 and that's really just to account for our current expenses in that line item. As I noted in the memo and as stated in the attached report, we pay for the Corvale bus seats and NL TAP out of this fund. There was a question posed about, you know, what, if anything, can we do with the Corvale bus service? We've, that was a goal that this council talked about, reallocating those funds for something more user-friendly, more efficient. And as I stated, we don't have any plans at the moment and we're tied into this contract through this coming fiscal year. So June of '26 is when we'll be able to get out of that contract, assuming we give notice in November. Hopefully by November, we'll have some additional questions answered, like what we're doing with the Corrantic Rail, if anything, how the Trip Connect pilot program is running and whether or not Yellow Cab would be, have any interest in additional, have the availability for additional capacity in their current operation. And I'm sure if there are any other ideas, we can certainly have a discussion about it.
And just remind me, we are not paying anything for Trip Connect right now?
We paid 15, like a $15,000, which we've already paid, contribution to the pilot. Other than that, no.
And in the Corvale bus, we pay for like their driver and the fuel and stuff like that?
We pay for actual expenses. It's, there's a formula in the agreement, but, yeah, everything, all the expenses and then it's prorated based on hours, hours of service in North Hurry.
Do we know what our, let me see if she's here, she's not. Do we know what our average wait time is for NL TAP when somebody calls for service?
No.
And we don't have to have that tonight. We can talk offline, but.
I, let me just see if it's.
Because when you talked about added capacity with Yellow Cab, you know, obviously it's one to have the service, but two, to make it convenient. And if it's, you know, just like buses, if you're waiting too long, they're not going to use it.
In a lot of cases, also what I found out with Yellow Cab, is they're actually scheduling ahead. So it's not a, it's not as much of an on-demand system as maybe it used to be. Folks are, if they have a doctor's appointment or want to go to the grocery store, they're calling ahead in a lot of cases. I don't, that number's not in the report, but I can, we can look that up. It sounds like, though, based on some of her, the feedback that Angie's collected, that the current users are, for the most part, pretty satisfied with the service.
Yeah, I'm hearing the same.
Anything else on that particular page? Otherwise, I'll move on to public, culture and recreation.
We're not hearing anything right now from LRS about increases in costs or?
No, they're, I believe they're locked in, we're both locked in. And I can't remember how many more years we have. I think it's at least five more years on that contract, which would mean the rates locked in. I mean, if they wanted to renegotiate the rate, then we'd be able to go out for an RFP, as an example.
Sure.
Okay, we will skip health and social services. We always talked about that at the second meeting, so we'll move on to culture and So I'll run down these departments. Not seeing much of a change in terms of budget with the library. We are seeing some significant changes with parks, buildings and grounds, and Guy and Nick will talk a little bit more about that. We're looking at a position within this department that would actually assist a lot of, all the other departments in terms of facility management needs. And I mentioned that in the memo, so whether it's City Hall, PD, Community Center, Centennial Center, you name it, this position would eventually play a big role in managing the maintenance and facility needs of those buildings. We're also requesting an additional labor. As you know, we continue to add more landscape medians, more roundabouts, more trails. And I'll say, when you compare our facilities, our landscaping to other communities, our trails in the winter to other communities, we're second to none. And we can do that because we have, we have previously had the horsepower to do so. If we want to continue with those, with that level of service, we need to, we need to hire more people. And then, I'm not going to, there's various pieces of equipment throughout here. I'm not going to highlight everyone, you can read them or you see them there. Guy's equipment coming out of the general fund this year is actually a little bit lower. We anticipate taking the, purchasing a bigger piece of equipment. You've seen that low-profile tractor that they use on the trails and around ponds. It's a very expensive piece of equipment. Guy reminded me that this would be the last time that we'll have to purchase it in his tenure with the city because we try to purchase it every 10 years, or trade it in every 10 years. We'll be using some cash on hand for that this year. Moving on to recreation, a couple noteworthy points here. We are budgeted money last year to replace, money last year to replace one of the vans. And then you'll see an increase in services and commodities that's a result of just costs going up. We use a lot of supplies and program supplies and materials at that facility and the cost, the inflation costs and costs for products and services don't skip a city. We are impacted as well, and so that's what you're seeing there. The community center budget is really a line item for our maintenance contracts and any other potential maintenance expenses that might come up through the year that are unanticipated. We partner with the cemetery board on maintaining the cemetery, so this line item is mainly for mowing and snow removal at the cemetery. And then at the aquatic center, you can see actually a jump in their budget, under 5%, reducing some areas and services and commodities in this area, based on what we've seen previously expended, but asking to take the part-time, three-quarter-time aquatic supervisor up to full-time as that facility continues to remain extremely busy. And again, just as we continue to grow and facilities like this remain popular, we have to staff it. And so that's what we're proposing for, what we're proposing in culture and recreation. I'll stop there and ask the council if they want to speak to any of the department heads.
The jump from '26 to '27 on the transfers line, is that for another, because we need another BASB van? Or why the fluctuation there?
Yeah, so what we try to do, so what you'll see at the next meeting is our five-year capital improvement plan. And that plan is tied back to this document as well. And so what we've tried to do is show that in FY '27, '8, '9 and '30, here are some expenses that we're planning right now. Now that, as this group knows, can change based on priority, based on, you know, the condition of the general fund. Really, '27 through '30 is just a, it's hard enough to focus on a budget for FY '26 when we don't start that year until July. FY '27 and out are really just our best guesses at this point. And worst-case scenarios, that's, I've always told the city council, what you see here, what we like to project for the future is kind of worst-case scenario so that we can back out of it from there and we're not in a bigger pickle if we're painting a real rosy picture.
So the facilities manager person would actually pick up a lot of people's, a little bits of a lot of people's job? Kind of coordinate that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was at. Can you speak to the capacity increase for other staff with the addition of another full-time staff?
Yeah, so I think the easiest way to explain this is, in the same way that Chris, when we started our internal IT department, brought in a lot of things and found efficiencies and saved us a lot of external dollars, this is doing that but for our physical facilities. So this position, you know, as we were talking about this, Centennial Center and, right, we'll have my, we'll have a person located out there. But my team does a lot of, we do events, we'll do marketing, we'll do, we are not, we're not facility managers. So there was that concern. Guy's team would do a lot of that work. He's obviously stretched thin. So this is an opportunity to sort of figure out what are the ways that we, what are the pieces we can pull together so we have a full-time job that also can help us manage these facilities? We watched some of those growing pains when we came into City Hall with Punch List. We see some of those growing pains as we deal with, as Shelley and Guy deal with our aging community center. Chief Plots is dealing, is going to be dealing with a renovated fire facility. He was super excited about not having to manage a facility there. Diane's team, Tyson, Lieutenant Landsguard, was super excited to no longer have to be the point person on HVAC. Ryan is super excited to not have to field emails complaining about HVAC and other small things. So we saw some opportunities there. We also saw an opportunity really to bring together, like how, like, do we have one person who can manage all of our keys, all of our security systems, all of our proximity cards? As well as help, we also had a concern about what happens when my team has a person located out there by themselves? Can we get a little bit of help, both security-wise, so there's a second person out there, but also can they do a little bit of helping if we just need a second set of hands to move some tables? Right? So there was some excitement about that. So Guy, Shelley, I, my team, we all sat down, we talked about what are all of the, what are sort of things that we could pull in? And we talked about a few different opportunities and we really saw this one is something that would help work across departments to really help find some of those efficiencies so we don't have every department head managing their proximity card or Guy walking, trying to figure out who all has keys, but Shelley's going to deal with the keys for the community center and that sort of thing. Really pull in as many of those things as we could. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Guy? Do you have anything you wanted to add, Guy?
I guess, just on my side, it's going to really be beneficial, just the fact that when a building need comes up, I'm in the middle of doing another task, you get pulled away. And this is becoming more and more frequent, where I'm getting pulled away from my duties that I should, you know, currently doing. So I think it's getting to the point where it's time to have a single specialized person that can oversee and concentrate on these things. And then, in another comment, we have City Hall and the Centennial Center going online. What a better time to bring somebody in, at ground level. And they're taught all these things by the people that are commissioning our building at that time.
So are you the de facto facility manager now?
Yes.
Or is it spread out amongst all the departments?
Well, yes and no.
But it's growing.
Like I say, when we moved into this facility, Ryan was managing the punch list, which is absurd. We just don't have a person to turn these things over to.
Are you saying?
I asked him for this as he was walking around with his list, looking at the ceiling tiles.
So I envisioned polling the directors to have them raise their hand. How many of them, on a very regular basis, are called to do maintenance things, either in their own facilities or cross facilities? Probably at least three-quarters of them, if not all of them, would raise their hand. How many, how much staff time are they sending their people out? You know, this, we've been critical of the fire chief running too many fire calls and not doing what he's been asked to do, because, well, he's running emergency calls. And it appears that this is similar, where you guys are getting polled. And what we're paying directors to sit and turn a wrench on a clogged drain is absurd.
Yeah, I'm supportive. I was curious about the capacity, because somebody's got to keep the lights on, right? They got to keep, and that's, in its simplest form, that's predominantly what I understand this role is. Yeah.
Seemed like a good idea.
Yeah.
Sold, guys. That's good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation.
And the Parks Department, there's really a lot of stuff going on, I think. We've, you know, not treated Guy badly in the past, but we've had to delay things and stuff. I'd like to try and get that taken care of. When he asks for something, we try and get it for him, the same year.
Can I, I appreciate all of the landscaping that we've done, and I know it takes a lot to keep up. I'm concerned going forward with potential cuts that we are, we may face with no ability to change, that are forced upon us. Are we in a position to cut those things back if we need to? Or, I mean, are we set up at this point where we can remove some of that stuff or put in something that's less maintenance-heavy?
Well, that's kind of, that's a loaded question. I know we want to keep things looking really, really nice, but yes, that comes at a cost. Of course, we could tailor that back a bit. And first place I would think, would be a good start, would probably be the watering schedule. It takes up a lot of staff time, a lot of resources. That's just to keep things growing in the summer. Things do go dormant, you will have some dieback because of that somewhat. But yes, there would be ways of cutting corners if we'd actually want to go that route.
If we need to.
Yeah, if we need to.
I'm not saying I want to.
Yeah. And you'll see a lot of communities, when you go through, I mean, I notice, you can tell they're unkept.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
And it's because, because it takes physical time and people being there to make things look, you know, the way you want them to look.
I don't think this is, in this particular role. I think it's more the application of larger problem that you're identifying. Is this, this, there could be potential for a negative impact in a number of different areas. This is just the topic that we're talking about right now.
Right.
Yeah. And so 100% understand where you're coming from. It's not, not this particular role. I think it's more the application of the larger principle that you're talking to, right?
Yeah, I mean, we may have to face that. I just wanted, we're hiring a new person to do that sort of thing, so I want to make, I'm just curious what it takes to repair that back if we have to.
Yeah, I mean, we would, I mean, right now, when we go into a, a design project, as an example, when we get to the landscape piece, we don't go very far without making sure Guy's there to make sure that what we do put in, while we want it to look good, we want it to be as low-maintenance as possible.
Right.
Given that it still looks good. We don't want concrete or even just grass in there. I think one of the special things about North Liberty, you know, when I first arrived here, one of the things I'd heard is, well, you know, they don't have an image, or they don't, they don't have a downtown, they don't have this. I mean, we have built an identity here, and we continue to do that through various ways, one of which is being, you know, when you come in to North Liberty, that roundabout looks pretty darn good, or that median looks good. And that will be a, that will be a road we'll have to cross potentially at some point.
And we did look at some of outsourcing, some of that, and it was still far cheaper for you guys to do it.
Oh, yeah. And I can do it all over again, but it is going to be tenfold what we're doing it for. It's ridiculous what it costs. And then to have them come in on a timely basis, we always try to hit like right before holidays and, you know, things like that, when people are going to be coming through our town, we do give a little extra attention to certain areas, knowing that people are going to be coming through. You're not going to get that by hiring it out. They're going to, when they show up is when they show up.
Yep. Thanks for.
You're welcome. Now, I just want to say, the council's made some great decisions as far as landscaping goes. For one, the benefit of mended soils within our roundabouts and that, that's huge. That saved, you put a little bit of extra money up front, and it will save us huge behind.
Spend a little more to save money in the long run.
Yep, for sure. Thank you, Guy. Yep, you're welcome.
Mayor, just an overall question for Ryan. What's been, what's the last five years of the cost of living increase for staff? Have we been, have we been stagnant on 3%? Has it varied?
It's varied between, and I don't, and we've always followed what has been in the union contracts, and that's varied between 2.5 and 3%, never above 3. But we also have the step increase in there with their, wherever they're at within the range. And so I would say the majority of folks get the step and the cost of living. So, you know, we're going to go back in, and I think I mentioned this in my memo, and look at, it's one of Alexa's first tasks.
She's going to be busy recruiting compensation.
Our compensation program. And we have a set of cities that we'll compare them to that we did last time. Same set. So, and some may disagree with me, but I feel pretty good about where we're at. We're always, you know, it's, it is, especially in law enforcement right now, it's a tough market out there, because you have cities given signing bonuses and things of that nature. But overall, while there may be, and that's, that's its own animal, too. We'll deal with that on the union side of things and look at comparable cities that the purb board has told us we have to look at.
Yeah, and we did some retention stuff for PD.
Yeah, we did, yeah. So we'll, I don't know if I'm even, if I'm answering your question, but we will be looking at that compensation study again.
You are. I guess my point is, we hear every year, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to get an FTE into the budget. It just is. The folks in this room, just as you heard, are doing way more than what they've really been hired to do. And you have always, as a city manager, done a great job of taking care of the employees. And I know that you have, and mayors before, and certainly this mayor. But I want to, I want to assure we continue to do that, especially now, as, you know, as we are looking at times possibly getting harder, that we continue to take care of those who have worked extremely hard for a very long time, making this city what it is, and making sure that we take care of them. So that's just the point that I'm making.
Anything else in culture and recreation that you want to visit about? Both Jenny and Shelley are out there, if you have any questions from a library or community center.
I have a rec center one, but it can be offline, it doesn't need to happen there. Just a request from.
Okay. Non-budget? Okay.
No worries.
Fair enough. We'll move on to community and economic development. Economic development line item remains about the same, couple grand more. Bulk of our money here goes to Greater Iowa City, and then $50,000 to city events, so city slate events, which is, that particular investment is, pays tenfold. And I think it's probably a good time just to recognize the work that Nick's team does, mainly, in a lot of cases, it's Jillian and Angela, of course, but Jillian's out there raising money for these events. And it's a lot of money. I mean, it's, it's close to $200,000, just for the events. I'm not talking about the Centennial Center itself. So we were able to leverage this $50,000 and do, and provide a lot of free events for this community. I think, again, there's another piece that helps us with our identity. Planning and zoning, I really had to beat Russ down on this one. He, he came in, you know, wanting a 40% increase on everything, and we got him down to under five, so.
He hasn't had time to think about how to spend more money than changing our zones.
And then, community relations. We wanted to point out here that we're doing things a little bit different when Centennial Center opens. You'll see there's a transfer line item of 150, it's going to be 153,000. Some of that's for computer transfer. But what we're doing here is taking Angela, Angela Miller's pay and benefits and putting that in the Centennial Center fund, which I think I had a snapshot of later here, to just try to better gauge what the city will be subsidizing each year for this, for this facility. Obviously, year one, we're anticipating a fairly significant subsidy because of startup costs. We're starting in a half, you know, it'll be open only a half of a fiscal year, so we anticipate that much less revenue. And we'll just be able to evaluate it that way. So you'll continue to see a transfer from this fund moving down, moving down the road. So those are the, those are the three departments in community and economic development. Any questions or concerns you want to address here?
I would just add my support, you know, or thoughts to the city slate stuff and the, our community events, our recreation, you know, our, how beautiful this city is, you know, all those things are, I feel like, our culture, our quality of life. And it makes me love this city a lot. And kudos, you know, to you for all you do for that. So that's all.
I would comment, and I agree, that every, I really appreciate everybody's efforts. The one question I have, and, you know, from an economic development standpoint, is it enough? Right? Is it enough to drive hospitality, tourism to the Centennial Center? Is it enough to continue to have that brand identity as a welcoming and very engaging and well-kept community, that kind of thing? Not on an answer now, but I think that economic development piece drives a lot of the things that we are thankful and grateful for, that we've all just commented on. So when we look at these types of things, make sure we look at those as investments into our community, so that we can continue to have those things that we just commented on.
Well, I don't mean to get on a soapbox here, but economic.
You didn't, I was.
Okay. You know, economic, while this is the title of this page, economic development is peppered throughout this whole document.
Yeah, and that's, that's what, yeah.
Whether it's, whether it's Guy's team maintaining the, the facilities, or the chief's team, you know, protecting the community. I mean, it's, it's all tidy. I know you know that.
I get that.
I take the opportunity. Anything else on that page? Otherwise, we'll move on. General government, this is exciting stuff here. We're proposing to increase mayor and salary, mayor and salary wage line item. And it's something that we have not studied since I've been here. When I'm talking with Tracy, I know we haven't studied this since she's been here. I'm sure we are way behind in this, and so we just need to take a look. And as part of, when we are out comparing, looking at our compensation, our staff compensation program, I've asked Alexis to look at what those cities are paying their elected officials. As I noted in the memo, that these are set by ordinance. So when we have some information ready to share, we'll bring that back to this group to consider. Then any changes don't, won't take effect. If you so choose to make changes, won't take effect until after, after the next election. So the idea here is to have everything in front of you and approved before November. Again, if you decide to do anything. I just wanted to note that you'll, you'll see that services and commodities jumping up a little bit in administration as we, as we learn this new facility in terms of utility costs and other software and maintenance-type fees, cleaning fees, et cetera. I will note that this line item is still cheaper than when you compare it to FY '24, when we were paying a lease or a rent on a facility. The only other comment, well, a couple things. Elections, we have an election this year, so we have to budget that every other year. Legal and tort, this is the city attorney's budget. You're seeing that much for changes there. And then personnel, it's just a general line item. We'll take training, different group training events out of this, safety, some safety-related expenses, et cetera. So that is general government, and I'd be happy to take any questions on this one.
But do, as far as this building goes, are we seeing, did we have projections for what we thought utility costs would be, and are they kind of in line with what we're seeing?
We didn't have projections. We think we are still paying too much at the moment, because we don't have, the HVAC settings and system has been a real pain in the rear. We're experiencing some of the similar things that the chief experienced when they moved into their new facility. I have some personal opinions on it, but I won't share those with you tonight. But we are working closely with the mechanical engineer and the three different vendors for the HVAC, the programming and controls. I mean, it's, there's a lot going on, and we don't have it honed in just yet. That concludes the general fund, unless there are any final questions there. If not, we'll move into road use tax. And you can find that on, someone beats me there, give them the page.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Have we ever, and maybe it's just a separate question, but looked back on the historical view on, this is what we budgeted, this is what we actual, so that we can see how close we're getting with some of these projections? I know we're looking at '26 now, '27, '28, '29. Have we ever done a comparison on, you know what, 2022, we budgeted this, we actualized this? This is the percentage difference? This is?
Yeah. And so, like, the FY '24 number in here is actual, it's not quite audited yet. You'll actually hear from the auditor at our next meeting.
Okay.
And so we do look at those regularly. And when we are in the actual financial software system, we can go back numerous years to compare even line items. we can go back numerous years to compare even line items.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we are able to do that.
I think that'd be an interesting exercise, at least from just looking out. You know, when you put it, the graphical representation, you know, is what I'm referring to on slide 21 here. You know, eventually those numbers are going to cross, right? Revenues less than expenses, at least projection. But that would give us historical information enough to say, okay, how, how, how accurate have we been with our budget and our actual?
One way to look at that question too, Brian, is to look at page 19, the general fund summary, and look at the percent reserved. And you'll see the FY24 actual was a 37.54. We have a reserve policy of 30%.
30%, yeah.
So when we exceed that, we're putting that money back into projects or paying down future budgets. So that's a, that's the one year in this page that we can see where the forecasted revenue was conservative and what actually came in and what our expenditures actually came in as well. So the snapshot back, going back as many years as we're thinking about looking at the forecast for the actual, typically will come in this way. We're typically putting money back into the city somewhere once a year because there's more that's been not spent or more revenue that's come in. And that's, that's happened consistently, I think, in the 17 years that I've been doing this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just note, and I think this is important to note, 18 years ago or so, the city's general fund was like under $100,000. And we've worked hard over the years to get that to a respectable position.
Yeah, no, I'm not discounting any of the effort that.
No, and I didn't take it that way, just to give, just to give you a little more context there.
Thank you.
All right, let's jump to page 29.
Did you have something?
No, I just, but it's important to keep that general fund balanced up because that really impacts a lot of things that help us along the road. Keeps our interest rates when we have to borrow money down. Makes it easier to pay things. We don't have to borrow as much money as for things just randomly, so.
And if we should ever need it, you know, whether that be a disaster or, you know, whatever, you know, we have the cash capability. Okay, page 29, Road Use Tax Fund. Start just talking a little bit about revenues here. And as you know, we generally budget conservatively. We've done that. We continue to do that. If you look about a third of the way down the page, you'll see revenue per capita. We're budgeting this year at $140. I think the DOT's recommendation is like $141. And they actually estimate out to, I think FY29, and we're close to $145 per capita. They tend to be a little more rosy at times and we're comfortable with. So we've, we've kept it a little, a little more realistic in my mind. Although you'll see in FY24, we hit $141.25 per capita, which is good. We're on pace for FY25, as I noted in, in the memo, to cover that budgeted surplus of 132,000. We should come out ahead there. We, you'll notice as the years go on, you're looking at some significant annual deficits in this fund. We anticipated that as we get into the later years of this decade, because every decade we have a census, you know, we get a census, get a new population. That new population, we get new revenue coming into this fund. So the idea, the last two censuses, three censuses, was to continue to build up this revenue so that if we get to a point later on in the decade, we still have, we still have a very healthy fund reserve here. And as Michael and I have talked, we may need to adjust equipment purchases and/or contributions to the, to the street repair program to get these numbers to align a little bit better. Feeling pretty good about this year's budget, this proposed budget, especially since we tend to be conservative on revenues. Michael has a list of equipment that he's requesting. Just to tick off a couple of the bigger issues, you have a skid steer in there for 80,000, a small dump truck. And then 165,000, and then a cracked seal machine that I'm sure Michael would love to tell you all about for 100,000. And here's a, here is another area where we've just seen prices jump. Not only prices for equipment, but the wait time for equipment is just crazy. And so, of course, that impacts these budgets as well. So with that, I think if you have any questions for Michael on this budget, he'd be happy to, to talk further with you.
So with the equipment being 24, 48 months or more out, are they, when you're purchasing, are you having to put a percentage down? Are you able to order and prolong payment where we can say, okay, we're going to order the dump truck now and realize the payment in '27 where we can get ahead of it? How, how is that working right now?
So the way we work with our vendors, it's worked this way since, since I've been in this position, except for the COVID years, that when you sign the contract, that's what you pay for that product. During the COVID years, when prices were fluctuating so much on items, steel was a big one. A lot of our equipment, obviously, is made of steel. That's where we had to finance or pay a difference there from what we originally signed on the contract. Other than that, for example, the, like the leaf vac, we're still waiting on that. That was a budget that we talked about last year. It's just a long lead time. When that was approved through council, then we signed that contract to purchase that item, and we expect to pay that price when it gets delivered.
When do we pay those costs then? Do we pay 10%, half, all of it upfront?
At the time of delivery.
At the time of delivery?
Yes.
So there's no expense to us until it's, until it's here?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, on, on all city items, I don't know if that's all the case, always the case, but at least in my experience, it's been the case.
I think with fire, we have to put some money down, is what I've experienced, some of the fire department equipment. But I believe, and Drew or Greg can jump in, I don't, have you guys had to put money down before?
In order to get the order put through, they wanted a percent.
We didn't do it, but that's what they wanted, yeah. So how this works is, in a lot of cases with this equipment, because there's a lead time, after the budget is approved in March, well, no, April now, then these guys can go and order the equipment, as long as we don't pay for it until July. And so that's, and it's usually never a problem because it's usually the following year before we get it.
Question on, on population and census, Ryan. And it's my just lack of knowledge here. Is there, I thought I heard at one point that we could do a special census and make an investment. Have we run any information or numbers on that saying, hey, you know what? That would be something we want to have that investment because we believe that population is that much more, and then that would help with our overall revenues? Have we looked at that anymore?
Yeah, it's a great question. We did look at it, and we did a special census in 2015.
In 2005?
Yes. And in 2015, the cost came in under $200,000. When we got the, maybe it was just over $200,000. When we got the estimate back for this year, for this time, it was right at $700,000. And at that point, when you run, so you have to pay for the general, you have to pay for that out of the general fund, even though it's impacting your road use tax funds. And so there, there may have been a small return on investment. And I can't remember the numbers exactly. If we, if we, again, depending on how much we grew.
Yeah.
But 700,000 out of the general fund is a pretty big number in addition to capacity from a staff time, because they're, they expect a lot from you as well, from you being city.
Yeah, so you need a significant population spike to cover that number.
So.
That's for sure.
I spoke to, Polk City just did, Polk City, they just did a special census. They're quite a bit smaller than us. And they, they were disappointed with the number they got back. Tiffin is doing one, so I'll be interested to hear how they, how they read.
Yeah, thank you for checking into that.
Yeah.
When you're buying equipment, you know, like skid steers and then, you know, guys getting, are you getting things that they all work together if you had to, like attachments and stuff?
Sure, great question. So guys in my department, wastewater, water, intermingle as far as what gets used for equipment. I believe on one of the items here this year, Guy and I both seen a need for, it's, it's a mini skid or a stand-on unit. The need is there from a perspective of those items need to be, are usable at certain times, but it's not an item that's going to go out every day. So we didn't, we collaborated on, well, wouldn't the best solution be to co-work together on purchasing this item? And if down the road, we deem that it needs to be two items or three items, then we'll cross that road when we get to it. So all the skid steer stuff, if I have a loader go down as far as loading trucks for sand salt, Greg's got a loader there that we'll use to load our truck, so works out pretty good. I think we got a old 19, or 2001 truck from, from Drew, ways years back. And so the equipment gets used over the years. And something for minor stuff can get passed off to other departments, depending on what the use is for.
The crack seal machine, that's something new?
Yeah, so the, the current unit we have, it's a 2010.
So we do, we already have one?
Yeah, yeah, we do, we do have that unit. You'll see my staff out, basically those kind of ugly lines that you see in the, the street that seal those cracks that, that prolong or help the life of that concrete street last longer, get a little bit more life out of it.
Okay, and the life of that machine is essentially ended, or?
Well, so it's like anything that my staff does, we're multitasking a lot of areas. So if a machine is down maintenance-wise or continually be problems, that cuts into that time that you can do that, that item. That's seasonal, so very specific. You're not going to go out and do that when it's raining. You're not going to go out and do that when, you know, when you've got salt on the street. So when the weather's good and you can do that item, you try and get it in and get it done. Typically on, on machines, we try and rotate through it a 10-year basis. But because of, like Ryan alluded to, the cost of these items, just trying to stretch those out a little more and a little more.
Are we, we're keeping the old one then, too?
No, so we've got two options that we've found are pretty useful for trade-ins. Getting a quote from the company that you'd be looking at for buying, purchasing a new item. But then there's also organizations out there where it's basically online sales that you can have a reserve set, and we'll set that reserve at what the trade-in line item was. And nine times out of 10, we'll get more out of the online auction. So.
Anything else from Michael? We'll move on to stormwater.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
And Michael also does a lot of stormwater work, so does Guy. Tom's depart, Tom has an employee in his department that does a lot of stormwater work as well. So this is kind of a lead-by-committee here. The revenues are coming in as we projected based on the new billing structure. You may have noticed in your bill, although you wouldn't have noticed it yet. The bill you get this month, I don't know if they've come out yet. We'll have the dollar, it has, for residential, it goes up a dollar. This was as part of the ordinance we approved last year. So there's basically one more increase set to take effect next year. And that's really, that really will only impact the commercial and industry businesses who are paying based on the amount of impervious surface they have. So we're looking at revenues coming in as, as we projected. And then you'll notice that we've tried, this fund is running in the red right now. And so what you're seeing here is really just funding personnel and services and commodities. And a portion of this, we do some, do some small grants for.
Soil.
Thank you, soil restoration, projects for residential properties, and then just other, other types of stormwater expenses that, that will pop up. We have, I do want to point out, and this is a, kind of a new feature to our utility funds here, we're showing you what the capital fund looks like. You can see the stormwater capital fund summary below. So we do have a balance in there and anticipate. We have a number of projects in the queue, and we're planning on, a lot of those are planned for FY28, as you can see here. But we'll continue to try to build that fund as we move along also. The two biggest expenses out of this fund are staffing and then the capital projects. We try to improve, improve the various stormwater areas.
Do we charge the state stormwater fee?
We, we will be. University, yeah, where's Russ? Yep, anyone with, that's, yeah, they have a huge, big parking lot, big buildings. It's going to be a big one. If not, we'll move on to water. Looks like everyone's okay with that. So water utility, I'll point out, just from gallon, number of gallons sold, we're on pace in FY25 to sell over 500 million gallons. Greg can speak to the capacity. It's, it's really, we're, we, we don't have a capacity issue at the moment. We are selling more than what we budgeted for here, which is not a bad thing. That being said, you'll hear from our consultants in February that we need to plan for some significant improvement projects down the road. And so that's what you're seeing in the proposed rate increases in the coming years. And I want to stress that this is a placeholder. I tried to acknowledge that in, in my memo. We, we have some more investigative work to do in terms of project costs, in terms of financing. We'll have our finance direct, or finance, our financial advisor, Tiana Poole, look at this in a little more detail as well. So there are a number of variables here. So if, I think you can assume that we're going to come to you with a recommended rate increase. What that number is, we just don't know yet. When that happens, it would be in May, sometime in May, so that it can go into effect in July. But as I noted again in the memo, it's been six years since we've had a wastewater increase and four years since we've had a water rate increase. And so as we plan for these future projects, we're going to have to be cognizant of, of what this fund looks like. What we don't want to have happen is what happened, I think, in '06, '07 area, where they, they came in and bumped up rates by, I think it was 25% or so. Somewhere in that area was a significant rate increase. We want to try to avoid that, and so looking at gradual steps as we move forward. That said, in FY26, Greg's got a couple of things planned. Maintenance of the Jordan well is a big one, Jordan Wells. He's got 175,000 set aside for that. I'll let him talk about that, but the Jordan wells are, you know, 1,800 feet below ground. So it's a, it's a significant investment, a significant maintenance. And then you'll note on here that I have planned for, going back to the, the potential project, we have a bond, noting, planning for a bond to come, bond payment to come on in FY30. Oh, and then I missed the first note here. We, Greg is proposing a new technology to help with maintenance of the water towers. And as we were talking about this budget, we brought up a video of this drone during our budget discussion. our budget discussion. It's pretty impressive and ultimately with us having one could save some significant money versus having someone come in. I'll let him visit a little bit about that when he comes up here. And the last thing I would point out is just the second page of this, again, showing you what those capital, the capital funds that we have on hand for water right now, it's totaling about $800,000. $240,000 of that is set aside specifically for membrane replacement. We set aside money every year for that, very similar in the wastewater, which we'll hear about in a bit. So we try to plan for these expenses, plan for these projects. Meanwhile, having enough cash and reserve on hand in case something should happen. I'll stop there and let you pepper Greg with some questions.
How much does it cost to clean a water tower or a tank without a drone?
Interestingly enough, obviously probably noticed Tower Two out of 240th Street. Could have used some attention. So I plan on taking that out of the operating budget, went out for quotes and I was shocked to say the least at what they came back at. Last time we had one cleaned, it was a matter of, you know, $2,000 or $3,000. The two, I sent out multiple, I only got two back. One of them was $20,000 and the other one was $40,000 for just that 400,000 gallon tank.
Wow.
I didn't have that in the operating budget. So back to the drawing board and I, I kind of got to thinking, you know, they're using drones for overseeding crops and different things. And I just went to Google and, and looked and sure enough, they have pressure washer drones basically. And they do a multitude of things. Obviously you can shoot video, we can inspect tower after a storm, whatever, make sure without climbing. You can clean buildings as well. You know, just a multitude of things that, that you'd be able to do. And I, I looked at it as if I had to do both of them annually. I mean, this thing would be a payback schedule fairly short to get that. I couldn't see spending even $20,000 to have, have the tower pressure washed. That being said, you know, looking into it, as far as expenses go, I asked about maintenance, wearing parts, that kind of thing. It sounds like the drone is pretty self sufficient. There's not a whole lot of maintenance to it other than potentially replacement parts down the road. The actual cost for cleaning materials, they gave me an estimate of about $300 on average. And it's basically just a sodium hyperchloride solution. And the drone, you know, they're capable of going about 400 feet high, carrying an umbilical cord. They spray 3,500 PSI at about eight gallons per minute. And then you kind of like clean in your house, you know, use a solution to break that loose and knock that off there. I think, you know, we don't do them very often. I think definitely if we had this, we'd probably use it at least annually on both towers. I think that'd probably extend the life expectancy of the paint, which is extremely expensive.
Yep.
I just see it as a benefit.
Yeah, you were, you're, you're ticking off a couple of other questions that I had there. And did I read or hear, or maybe it's just an hallucination, do we need to bring another water tower tank online here sometime in the near future?
That'll be talked about in February.
Okay, okay. That's where I think I got it from.
Yeah.
Okay.
How often are we cleaning them?
So this is just the exterior. The interior, we're required to do at least every three years. And then they'll come in and a certified inspector will write up a report and explain if we need to do anything with door seals or paint replacement or anything on the interior wet part. This would just basically be the exterior of the tower.
This drone would clean the exterior?
Exterior, not the interior.
That's a separate thing for the outside.
Yep. Now, the interior, I do have that scheduled for this summer. The interior came back at about $3,000 for one tower.
Is that a person that?
What's that?
Is that a person that gets in there and go home?
It is. We've done that the last several cleanings we've had done. We shut the tower, we fill the tower up, close the valve off, somebody actually suits up, they spray them down with a bleach solution, they go in and do the cleaning. Once they come out of there, we take several bacteria samples, make sure the chlorine levels at a certain level. AWWA, American Waterworks Association, has a whole guideline on what you have to follow if somebody gets in there. It's worked out really well for us. In the past, you'd have to drain the tank, have somebody still get in there, clean it up, then you'd have to super hyperchlorinate. And then it could take several days for the chlorine to come down enough to where you could actually test it. You've got a couple of samples 24 hours apart that have to come through there and then, so you're out weeks basically. The way this kind of came about was when Tower Three went on, we couldn't afford to have it out of service. We just didn't have the storage. Tower Two's only 400,000 gallons. And when we have to, even when we shut the valve and take Tower Three out, we start getting complaints in various areas of town because they can really tell when the pumps kick on and off at the plant and some different things. So it's worked out well. We kind of stage it. So, you know, and the other thing to this is anytime we have a crew come in to do this type of work, obviously they have to mobilize. A lot of them aren't in the state, so you've got all those expenses. And then they're at the mercy of the weather a lot of times. So what we've done in the past is had them come in and clean, you know, one side of the ground storage tank at the plant and then one tower in that cleaning. And then they'll leave and then come back and we can try and work it out to get the other tower and the other side of the ground storage. So we always have things in service we can't, you know, afford to be without. So it's worked out well.
And this drone will be operated by us?
So included, you know, this is just one company I looked at. I spoke to the individual today and they've changed their, their training a little bit. Basically, it would require our staff to go get certified licensing, which they said is an online course. He thought it was about $130. You get that and then they will actually send somebody out on site. Spend three hours of classwork with them. And he said, if you want to clean a tower while he's there. Originally, it was only three people that were included in that fee. He said, I don't care if you have one or 10, they're on site and they're at your disposal. So they'll come out and actually run through it and drain on it.
So is that, is that regulated through the FAA?
And it's basically the course that you take is more that you understand the laws so that you're not flying them in areas they shouldn't be or.
So have you had conversations with the seller? I would think maybe, again, this is, this is drone nerd talk from work. When it's not tethered, you have to be licensed. If it's tethered, there's not a license requirement. Is this considered tethered with the umbilical cord?
It is tethered, but he, he led me to believe that you would have to be licensed to handle this. This is a, it's a pretty good sized drone, obviously to carry an umbilical full of water and be able to stabilize with that kind of pressure flowing through there. But yeah, he, he indicated you would have to be licensed.
That was my question, or at least kind of looking ahead, is there any application with fire department for future?
I don't know. I won't say no.
I'm not a fire expert. That's why I look directly at Brandon, like you guys are using this. I see them, you know, online, that kind of thing. And if you've got it, then very similar to what the street, you know, street departments are using, right? You've got this piece of equipment that you got from here for 20 years ago. What are the, what are the additional applications?
Right. I will say if, if cleaning other buildings is something the council wanted to look at, that is, he did recommend a DI system so that you don't have spots all over the windows. I did not include that in here. That's quite a bit more expensive. I was just basically looking at, you know, our immediate need for it, I guess. But it is something that could be done in the future. I kind of, at the time I looked and really, this is probably the largest building, I'm guessing that, you know, otherwise we have aerial lifts and we have pressure washers and everything else that probably get everything else, but, but it is an option.
From my seat, thanks for exploring new options, you know, to, to look at how to keep costs down.
I was, I was really shocked. Actually, when I went to the internet and there's all sorts of videos of these things working, the first video that popped up was from the city of Cedar Rapids. And I spoke to a couple of individuals there and they, they just praised it, said that that's what they're going to do in the future. So those, I will touch a little bit on the Jordan well.
Greg, before you do that, can you remind us, obviously maintenance is crucial for the outside and hopefully would prolong painting. What's it cost to paint Tower, Tower?
Three.
Big Tower, Tower Three.
Yeah, so I, I have it in the CIP here in a few years. That tower is probably going to, it's heading to where it's going to need probably some repainting. The quote that I received was one and a half million dollars for just the exterior. So I misspoke. That is both interior and exterior, but one and a half million dollars. That was a couple of years ago. Each year I've called, they tend, you know, add a certain percentage to that. I think it's up over 1.6 now. Yeah, yeah, there you go.
I think you just gave Guy his retirement gig.
But on the Jordan well, that's for an acidation cleaning. And it's, it's a very extensive process. They'll have to come in and pull the well, then they'll go in and scrub the casing with a wire brush. Everything they scrub falls to the bottom, takes several days then to bail all of that material out. It's just iron and manganese that accumulates in there. Once that is cleaned out, they'll inject it with an acid mixture. That'll sit for a few days and then they'll put a temporary older pumping motor down in there and they'll pump that acid back out. And that can take, you know, several days to weeks to get that cleared out. Once that's done, they'll pull that equipment back out, put our equipment back in and then sample it and go through. So it's something that we, you know, in the past, we've done it as needed, I guess. And it, it seemed like we're getting to about a five year rotation of, of where that needs to be in February with the facility study. I think our, our, our biggest need right now is raw water. We don't have a whole lot of standby if, if a well goes down, depending on which well it is, it can really impact our, our ability. We have plenty of capacity at the plant. We just don't have a lot of backup for the wells. So I'd like, the reason I've got this in there now is I'd like to do this one on our schedule before we hit summertime when we're really have a lot of demand on that. We've got the hospital coming on and so we'd like to get that. It seems like all of them are about five years. So we're trying to rotate through and stay on top of that.
How many do we have? Three?
For Jordans?
Yeah.
We do. Again, in February, we'll be looking at maybe some changes with the ASR well.
Okay.
That could potentially help out quite a bit too. I won't go too far into that, but.
This has been the longest time, I think, we've made you stand up to the podium in all of the budget sessions. I think it was the drones that did it too.
Yeah. So back to the Jordan well, sorry. We're doing all three or just one?
No, this will be just one.
Okay.
So one Jordan and one Solarian well. The Solarians aren't quite as expensive. They're not nearly as deep and nearly as large, but there's, it's quite a bit of expense in the, in the Jordan.
So which wells are up this year?
This would be well number six and well number nine.
Which are?
Six is over here in Penn Metals Park and nine is one of the new ones that was on, drilled over there off of Zeller Street.
Thanks, Greg.
So Ryan, with the proposed increases, I'll ask the favor of all of us to minimize emails because every time rate increases go, we fill up for him to work with Nick and his team to explain and show the comparisons. I think comparisons to like cities is important. And I also think that getting the information out of no rate increases for multiple years in a row is very important to get out to our citizenry. So I would ask that that please happen.
Sure, and we can do that when we, again, this is just a placeholder. So once we get a little further along in that discussion, we can certainly do that. So moving on to wastewater, here again, we're on pace to sell over 500 million gallons of wastewater this year, FY25. I'm not going to go through all the rate stuff. Again, we've already talked about that. So I will just jump into what, what, what's being proposed here. In FY26, the, you've seen some of these things before, like the membrane set aside. We do this every year so that when we're ready to replace these membranes, we have the cash on hand to do that. We're installing some de-watering equipment to upgrade that facility. You might, for those of you, I think you've all toured that facility and you might remember the building that has that old army truck in it and a elevator that dumps stuff into that army truck. That's the de-watering building. And so we have some upgrades that we're proposing on that. And to give you a brief story, I don't know if Drew was on Facebook Marketplace or eBay, but he found some de-watering equipment, fairly new de-watering equipment that was used from Clinton, Clinton, Iowa. And we picked it up for a steel. And so that's going to allow us to, to make some upgrades outside of our facility upgrade project that we'll talk about in February. So good work to Drew for, for finding that. And then maintenance of lift station, in this case, 230th Street. I'll let Drew talk about the 125,000 that he has budgeted for that. But we have the other, so as we talk about maintenance of lift stations, we're also decommissioning a lift station. And that's the one that's in Fox Valley. And you, for those of you that have been on this council for a while, you remember that when we installed the East Trunk Sewer that connects to the high school, we, Coralville shared that cost with us because that sewer line serves roughly 500 acres over in the Scanlon addition, south of the high school and even into just south of North, North Central Junior High. In return, they're going to serve about 500 acres of our property right now that all dumps into the Fox Valley Lift Station. And so they're bringing up a sewer that will connect to that, basically say connect to that lift station. The lift station will be discom, just decommissioned and all that waste will then gravity flow down there. So Coralville got rid of the lift station, we got rid of the lift station, we saved money on the construction. It was a win-win for everyone. And so we're now getting ready to, to make that switch on the Fox Valley Lift Station. The last thing I would mention, we put a placeholder in, and I failed to mention this in the stormwater budget, but you can see here, we, I pointed out that we in FY28 have bumped up on personnel services. We're looking at, one of the issues we continue to have is just maintenance of storm and wastewater mains, whether that's flushing them out, inspecting them, making sure they're operating properly. And so we're looking at bringing on kind of a division to help with, this isn't a couple of years, but I wanted to point it out now, kind of to help with the collection systems. It's not uncommon when you get to a certain size and have as much flow as we do, that we need a group of people, a small group of people focused on the collection side of things. Collection being all the mains where the storm and wastewater are coming in. So nothing for us to decide tonight, just putting in a placeholder there as we, as we plan for the future. So I'll stop there. I'm sure Drew is excited to share with you some of his plans. Questions for Drew?
There's no drones.
Nothing cool and flashing.
I am curious, I am curious about the, the lift station there on 230th Street. So what do you got going on out there?
So that one, a lot of our lift stations are just aging, you know, and they're not, the equipment that goes in them is, is in the greatest environment. It's pretty harsh environments for this stuff. So we do our best to keep up with stuff, but some of it is just, it's hard to maintain. It's, it's piping that's attached in the walls to, to the structure. So we found a leak that sprung up in one of the joints and to properly repair it, we need to get in the wet well to do it. And to get in the wet well, you can't have flow going in there at the same time. So then we have to bypass pump. So we looked at this with our engineers and looked at it with contractors. It's, it's doable, but at the same time, when we're, when we're doing that, if we're just replacing one joint, I don't want to set up another bypass if we spring a leak the next year. So when you look at the age of it, it just makes sense to go ahead and propose replacing all of the piping from that wet well to the valve pit with that. The pumps, we can handle changing out pumps, but I'll probably, we'll be buying a new pump with this. We recently purchased one new pump for the station. So we're running two different manufactured pumps in this thing, which requires a little different stuff for controls, but this primarily is just the infrastructure for the piping and the valving itself to do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
When is our next, your next membrane replacement overall?
So our last one, I think we just finished up in 2022. So, you know, So, you know, the membrane manufacturer says, you know, plan on a 10-year replacement. We don't, we have enough capacity in membranes where we don't have to push them quite so hard, which actually extends that life out. And we've seen, you know, 10, 12. Some of our membranes now are 15 years. We just have a couple of test cassettes that we're just seeing how much life we can get out of them. Once they fail, they fail though, like there's no clean flow, you have to shut them off. So our next replacement will probably be starting, try and stagger that out between the whole train. And that will be by 2032, I think, through 2035.
Okay.
Somewhere in that range, depending on what we see for performance, what we see for population growth. And we're working with the membrane manufacturer right now. We're kind of on our third revision of this second full replacement proposal. So that's part of that 220,000 that's set aside, we just pull from that.
Yeah.
No, no questions for me, just more of a comment. You know, a couple of really cool examples of, back to Eric's comment on, hey, we could potentially have some pain, heartbreak, heartbreak, trouble coming down the road. Continue to encourage this group, your staff, your employees to look for those innovative solutions, to look out, think outside the box for different opportunities to ease the burden down the road with, you know, an innovative solution today or hey, you know what, let's plan for tomorrow. So thank you to you, a couple of different examples here recently, but really the entire staff. It's been, it's been rewarding to see that effort. And then when it comes in, it's like, it's reflected here in the numbers, that's for sure. So I appreciate that.
Yep, those membranes have lasted a lot longer than they originally anticipated. We appreciate that because it was very scary. It's like, well, this is pretty new technology and stuff and it really has the capability of, you know, really cleaning stuff up, good for the environment. But boy, the initial cost was a shock and you guys have done a really good job maintaining those things and making them work.
For sure.
Anything else, Drew? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that wraps up the operational side of the budget. I would ask if there are any questions that have come up for any of these folks in here that certainly we can talk about it again, but if anything has come up since we've talked that you ask it now. We'll have another budget discussion next week focusing on capital projects. A smaller group will be back. We'll also talk a little bit about the social service contribution and we'll clean up the model. We're still going through and just catching small things. And we'll have that for you in your council packet this week. My last remarks would just be, and Brian talked about, Councilor Leibold talked about working with or being creative and ingenuative. You guys hear me say this all the time. And we got a great team out here. And, you know, you want to see, you want to see someone make the most of a dollar, you go talk to a librarian. I mean, there isn't many, they are resourcefully frugal. And then you have Drew down there, you know, welding their own stuff, going to get stuff welded that a part might cost $10,000 and he just got it welded for 500. And I could give an example of everyone out here. It's a great team. It makes this process a hell of a, heck of a lot less, more painful than it could be. And so thank you, folks, for being here tonight and for all your efforts. Thank you for your continued support. And we'll, we'll keep trying to fight the good fight.
Thank you all very much for being here. And I know the day was long and extended, but incredibly helpful to us and the community at large.
Thank you, and Ryan too. Thank you. We really appreciate you guys being here tonight. So we don't get to see y'all at one time together.
With that, I think we're kind of past item nine, final questions and wrap up. Ryan just did that. Is there anything else to add? Hearing none, I'll have a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you all.